Yeah.
It's called true love.
Oh, it was like this twenty years ago, huh?
Yeah.
Six bowls.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we will call the meeting to order. It's six o'clock. Angela.
Present.
Chris.
Here.
Matt.
Here.
James.
Present.
And myself. Okay, if you're able, please stand for the torch. I am going to read this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which we stand us, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, I'm sort of here. Oh. All right, this is the meeting of the Rashad School Board in public for the purpose of conducting the school district business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment as indicated on the agenda. Notice of this public meeting was given as required by Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight four, one through four, by being posted at the Community First Bank, the Rashad Public Library, the Rashad Post Office, Rashad District Office, the Rashad School Website, and with W D U X, W S P T, and W S A W. Consider approval of agenda additions and revisions.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
One second.
Okay, a motion has been made in second to approve the agenda as stated. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, any objections? No, the motion is carried. All right. Public comment. Do we have anybody signed up? Okay, then we'll just mosey on through that. Student of the Month.
Greetings, Board. This is a new segment for the school board meeting that administration has decided to implement this year. We kind of conversed about it last year and said, okay, let's wait until the new school year. And basically what this is meant to do is to recognize our students, or three students from our school, obviously, that have excelled. Both, it could be in character, could be in academics, it could be in friendship or compassion, it could be in any number of things. And so the reason that we have them coming to the board is, A, I think it helps connect the board with some of the great things that our kids are doing in school. And sometimes if you're not connected, if you don't have kids here, you can come in and be like, oh, what's going on in the school? Here's an opportunity to see and hear about some of our really good kids. It's also an opportunity for our students and our families as we go through time to have those students and those families get involved with the board meeting and not maybe get over the fear of being here at a board meeting, like, oh, my gosh, I don't even know what to do. And, oh, by the way, families, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting if you don't want to, we'll get through the process. We would always allow you to exit. You're more than welcome to stay for the whole thing. However, you don't have to stay for the whole thing, is what I'm getting at. So with that, I'm going, we're going to start in elementary and then go middle school and then high school. So I will turn it over and basically what we've asked our staff is to nominate students. Once they're selected for here, we've asked that if our staff is willing to come and speak on behalf of that student as well, so you can get the firsthand account. Now, if somebody can't be here, then it's my expectation that they type up a little paragraph, the principal will read that and share some anecdotal notes about the student and, you know, what kind of person and student they are. So with that, I will turn it over to Principal Marion Klein, and we'll start this process. And, oh, by the way, we do have a Student of the Month medal that Board President Carla Schuffs will put around your neck. And we also have a certificate that is signed by all the board members for our students of the month. So I'm done talking.
So we, down in Little People Land, pick a Student of the Month every month, every teacher and every homeroom teacher. And we base that on the character traits that we are working on through our social-emotional curriculum. We talk all month about whatever that social-emotional trait is, and then teachers pick someone based on that. And so when we sat down as a staff to decide how we wanted to select a student to rise to the board level, the staff felt that they didn't want it necessarily to be based on that because we're already recognizing children for character traits. So what we decided as a staff was that we were going to have a rotation. So this month, we are having grade five, next month will be grade four, and it will continue down until you have one representative from every grade level that comes forth to you. So that's how we decided that we were going to do it here in Little People Land. Middle school, high school has done theirs a different way, which is completely understandable. So fifth grade teachers got together and said, who would we like to rise up to the school board level? They selected Little Miss Habeck here. And they have written some things about her, but they will share those things. And then I collected from the rest of her teachers some thoughts as well. And I literally just got an email from the last teacher. So I'm going to reprint this and I'll get you a better letter with everybody tomorrow, but I will send you away with this one today. So Mrs. Patton and Mr. O'Donnell are here to share a little bit about Miss Habeck. Do you want the letter or do you want to just speak?
Well, I have copies. My end of things, but do you want me to read everyone's?
No.
Okay, Mrs. Patton and I got together and decided that Madeline would be the best choice for Student of the Month. And we got together and came up with a list of reasons why. And so when we came up with this, Madeline Habeck is an enjoyable, lovely, conscientious person that we recommend to be Student of the Month. Whether it is in the classroom, playground, hallway, or the cafeteria, Madeline can be trusted to handle situations in a constructive, efficient manner. The positive attitude Madeline brings turns the whole environment positive. Classmates turn to Madeline for ideas, guidance, and friendship. Madeline consistently produces high-quality academic work both on classwork and on assessments. Madeline steps forward to help in many different situations without being directed. Her sense of appropriate action needed to resolve situation far exceeds her chronological age. It is with great enthusiasm that we nominate Madeline Habeck for Student of the Month.
Like I said, her specialist teachers all wrote very similar things. Exceptionally hardworking, demonstrates maturity beyond her years as a fifth grader, wonderful listener, always kind, eager to help others. Just starting to learn to play the oboe and is doing a great job, and that. And she always cheers, she always has a cheerful attitude, sets great example for others, frequently helps her classmates out and encourages everyone to do their best. She is often helping around the classroom, she's focused, and she's trying her hardest at all times. She is super awesome and musically talented. Mrs. Aquick said that she leads by example, always looking for ways to assist her peers and shows concern for the learning environment and encourages others to do the same. And Mr. Wohobiak said that she displays leadership, independence, and positivity. She's a pleasure to have in class and makes everyone in the room a better person.
Madeline, you want to come up here? Do you want to be started with this? Okay. I'm going to. And I guess you have to smile.
All right, now we'll jump to the middle school. Mrs. Stouts?
Um, so, uh, my first year, we're still working on our process a little bit, but one of the things that we changed from last year was nominating and recognizing more than one student. And those students, I believe, generally came from the senior class at the high school, and so we changed that. And we decided we would recognize as many kids as worked it, based off of character traits, behavior, academics, you know, all of those. And so at the middle school level, we had, see, we had seven students that were recognized, and out of those, we voted. And Georgie Melodic was our top Student of the Month. And Georgie was going to come tonight, but I see that she's not here, but.
Do you want to read what?
Fire is here.
Do you want to start with?
Sure. Sure. So she has demonstrated a strong work ethic by continually being prepared for class, taking pride in her work, being a leader in class discussions, and going above and beyond to master the content on her own time using optional resources. She is always smiling and willing to put her best effort into difficult tasks.
So what I noticed about Georgie, she really walks into the room smiling every day and sits down and is just, she just sits and glows at her desk and just can't wait to learn things, I think. She's, it's really fun to teach her because of that, and she's very interested and she asks questions. And she really does like to dig deeper into whatever we're doing. But what's really special, I think, is she's sitting next to another student that often needs help with things. And I never ask her to help, she's just always leaning over and giving him some ideas, some hints, options to do. And it's just really been great to watch that, too. So she has some great leadership skills.
And for those people that aren't here, I might, Mrs. Schuffs, I may ask you to come to school like Monday or Tuesday of next week at some point in time. We'll call them down, present them with those things, have the photo opportunity as well. But we'll definitely get them the medals and we will get them the certificates. And if you're available, that'd be wonderful photo op for those individuals because, again, I think as we move forward, this might be rational record. This could be, you know, website, social media, and so we want those photos to go along with that right now.
Okay.
All right, we'll be on to the high school. Do your hair differently.
At the high school level, we had seven students nominated for September, all the way grades nine through twelve. And it was a really hard choice, but the teachers decided that Izzy Trupetelski would be our top Student of the Month. And they said that Izzy has demonstrated effective leadership in her roles as president of three organizations, National Honor Society, Student Council, and the Senior Class. With a smile on her face, she commits herself to improving the lives of our student body and community. She is also a leader in the high school band, approaching everything with dedication and enthusiasm. She encourages all other students and is a wonderful musical role model for other students. She is always one of the first ones to ask questions. And to stand up personal, you know, Izzy's one of the first students that I met, and she welcomed me to their class meeting. She also helps out in the office, and she just does like whatever you're asking her to do with a smile on her face. So she's very deserving of the student honor.
And as I said, as we move forward, we'll continue to do this and try to encourage families and students to come to the board meeting, A, so they can kind of see what a board meeting looks like and how it's run. And then also so the board can hear, you know, those, three accounts from each of the different schools, an account of the good things that our kids are doing. So that way, hopefully keeps the board a little closer in touch with the students as well.
Thank you, Madeline, for coming.
I have three other kids in my classroom, so.
We'll let you go.
Appreciate it. They were playing very nicely with Legos when I was walking.
We didn't hear that one.
It's not recording at all, right?
No, not recorded.
All over Facebook.
That's all. Okay, District Administration report.
I think we have a handful of things. I just wanted to show the board, and Mr. Bulte shared this with me. But basically, what this is saying is that last year, we had twenty-five dual-credit students that earned ninety-eight college credits through N T C, which totals just under twelve thousand dollars if they would have taken those classes, you know, outside of our dual-credit arrangement. And again, dual-credit is where they take the class here, and we have agreements with them, with N T C, that they get the credit there. So that's, twelve thousand dollars that we save our families, which I think is a great thing to help either A, springboard those students into N T C, because then they actually count for the credits that they took, or if they go to a different college/university after high school, many times, these won't, these won't transfer in as, you know, if it's accounting grade, it's not going to transfer in as three credits of accounting, but it will transfer in as three credits of elective. So it's just electives that those students don't have to take if it's a liberal arts college. So I think that's a pretty good number. We continue to try to have those agreements and those arrangements with our post-secondary institutions so that way we can have reports like this and have our students have greater opportunity. Next, I have something that Rachel shared with me, and this is from our WASBO organization, so the Wisconsin Association of School Business Officials. And it's not necessarily cryptic as the font set would look like because it's Halloween themed. But basically, it is kind of a foreshadow to the upcoming biennial budget, twenty-five through twenty-seven. Because if you had an opportunity to read this, it talks about Governor Evers' veto power to extend for the foreseeable future the three hundred and twenty-five dollars per pupil per year. And that's extra revenue, limited authority, that's levy authority. So we can increase taxes by three twenty-five. It also talks here about the special ed dollars that they're going to spend. And as a state, there's supposed to be one point four billion of that. However, if you read into this article a little bit, they also have provided zero percent increase, zero dollars in general aid. So what that means for the board and communities around the state of Wisconsin is that the boards are going to have to decide, which we will later, whether or not to levy to the max because there's zero dollars in state aid, but yet we have the authority to raise three twenty-five per pupil. Some districts might choose to not levy to the max, which our board could do as well, but then you lose that authority forever, which puts us in a, puts us in a kind of a spot, if you will. So the reality is that even though we hear, again, Madison talking about, oh, we've given public schools so much more money, it's not necessarily as transparent as they like to make it believe, as they like to tell in their storyline. So for us, in all likelihood, it is mean, it will mean that our taxes go up and it'll look like the schools raising the taxes, but it's not us because, again, the three major components to the tax levy is our enrollment, which you can say we kind of have influence over, but we really don't control it. The property values, which we have zero control over, and our spending, which we do control. So one out of three, one and a half out of three, one out of three we control, one and a half out of three we have influence over. And that's, moving forward, that's a continued concern. It goes on to speak that eighteen years in a row, the revenue that they, that the legislators have provided for school districts have not kept up with inflation. Eighteen years in a row, we have not kept up with inflation. So just like any home checking account, right? If all of a sudden my gas and my water and my sewer and my electricity go up three percent and my salary goes up two percent, I'm falling behind. And that's exactly what schools have been doing for the last eighteen years. So where there might have been a little bit, a little bit of fat on the steak, so to speak, eighteen years ago, that has been trimmed. And we're getting down to the point where we have to survive on referendums. Small schools around the state are, it's rare now that they don't have ongoing referendums just because of the shortage. And again, we're in a referendum year because our referendum ends next summer. So we are going to go back to the voters. We'll have information from Baird I Financial Partner coming up in the recent months ahead. And we will try to determine what is the best ask for our community, what is the best ask for the school in order to keep our school going with the quality education that we're providing. So it's an article, if you haven't had a chance to read it, I would ask that you do take a look at it because it does kind of foreshadow where we're going with school finance. It also talks about how eighty percent of the districts in the state of Wisconsin have had to go to operational referendum. Still, others have gone to capital referendum, but over eighty percent strictly operational. That's just to maintain the current education level. So Rachel, anything to add to that?
No, I think you said it pretty well. Bottom line here is this data said you can tax more if you want, right? That's where our aid is coming from. They're not increasing urgency. They are telling us you can tax more.
Hey, I don't know, I haven't heard a recent term, but a couple of years ago, they were talking how we had this seven billion dollar surplus. They got, for the last eighteen years, we haven't kept that from inflation. Before this year, I think it was six of the last ten, there's been zero percent of increase, you know, six of the last ten. And even in those, it's one of those things where, as I've tried to state before, if they say, oh, yep, we're going to cover, we've been covering sixty, forty percent, and now we're going to cover fifty percent, it's kind of a shell game. Because then they say, okay, it's not really new money, but we're going to lower taxes by ten percent, so now it balances out, which is, it's frustrating. Because we hear all the time, oh, we're investing a ton of money in our public schools. No, we're not. And they've increased the amount that private schools, not private schools, but private voucher programs can take. So that's another thing that is a little bit frustrating from a public school. And it's part of our local community, but we also provide transportation to all the proper schools within our boundaries, right? So anybody that goes to Seattle, we, it's mandated that we have to get them there on our public transportation. So those costs, when you're not funded at CPI or the inflationary rate, all that costs more. So just kind of a preview, we'll have to see what it looks like on our actual tax bill this year. But that's kind of what WASBO is foreshadowing for us with that article. I also linked a message from a kindergarten teacher. This was something that I found on social media. And I normally don't pull things off of social media because I don't know if it's fact-checked. And I, I don't know what this is claiming to be, a kindergarten teacher, it could be AI generated, I have no idea. But one of the ladies that posted, it talks about how, from a kindergarten teacher that has been in the business forty years and is now retired, and talks about not necessarily how kids have changed, because kids still need nurturing, they still need structure, they still need routines, but the peripheral things as far as the technology and what seems to be becoming more and more increasingly as a barrier to education. So I'm not going to read the whole thing, I just wanted to call your attention to it because I think it's an interesting piece to get a perspective of where teachers are coming from. Because it is a little bit different landscape when it seems like in society, we have education as kind of a target now instead of a partner. I mean, we go back to the eighties and nineties, and, I mean, parents and teachers work side by side. And now it seems like the societal shift has been to blame the teacher for the kid. You know, instead of saying, hey, how can we come together to help this student? Now it's like, why are you doing this to my student? I'm doing anything to your student. We're trying to encourage their thought process so that they learn. So take a look at that, if you will. I did post here the R E A officers. Every year, we present this. So Tammy, who's present, is the president this year. Erin Pliska is vice president. Lindsay Lasek is the treasurer. Kim, who just left, is secretary on the negotiate team. And Sandra Mark is public relations. Andy Krieger is on negotiations, as is Elizabeth McDonald. So Tammy's here, if we have any questions for her. I told her that there may be, may not be. Does anybody have any questions about the officers or anything R E A related? No? But every year, Tammy, thank you for providing this for the board. Everyone, just want to know who's in the leadership position so that way if there is ever a question for the teachers' union, we can, you know, channel it to the appropriate, the appropriate people. Two things left. I just wanted to publish the election cycle. Basically, we're getting into that year where board members have to think about whether or not they're going to rerun for their position. And there's some time hacks in here. So if somebody doesn't want to run, we need to know that by December twenty-sixth. If, if, right now, we have James that has come in for a vacant position. So if you want to continue, we'll have to rerun, similar to what it was a few years ago. Matt and Carla, you are also up this year. So if you remember when Lee was on the board, we had three people running. And what will happen is if we have, we could have up to six without a primary. If we had more than six candidates, there would have to be a primary. And then what will happen is when it gets to the vote, the top two candidates will get the two, three-year terms. And then the third vote getter will actually take on the two-year role that's remaining from the vacated seat. So kind of an interesting way how that all works out, but that's what we learned a couple of years ago, and we had that same situation. So just wanted to put that out there so that people are aware of those dates well in advance. Lastly, I wanted to just talk about some food service updates. And really, there's, I just, this is a note from Teresa, our food service director. And the two that I really wanted to highlight is that, A, or one, is that they're starting to make more and more homemade meals, which I think is a great step. There are free smells in the hallways most days. When they're making bread, they're making garlic bread, they're making meatballs. Those are all made from scrap. Um those are all made from scratch now. And when they're cooking that, that smell kind of, you know, flows down the hallways and all of a sudden you start to salivate a little bit. Oh, the garlic bread tastes, that looks, that smells amazing. I I think I want to go have lunch. I think that encourages participation as opposed to getting a bag that's been heated up and here's your processed whatever. Now, obviously, we're still gonna have some chicken nuggets, we're probably still gonna have some of those mini corn dogs. Um but that's that's a that's a really good step. Think seems like things are going well down there, uh everybody's getting along pretty well, um whi- which is good. Because again, that makes a happier culture, happier um serving line, and that's what our students then see as well. So that's good. Um secondly, two kind of two new things, but uh kind of the the big news, the um dairy farmers of Wisconsin have a dairy and schools program. Uh and there was a grant that Teresa applied for, and we've been kind of repairing this this milk cooler that has been leaking. Uh it doesn't necessarily hold consistent temperature when it's open during the lunches and all that cool air escapes and it takes a while to cool back down. Um well, we she wrote a grant for a new milk cooler cooler and she was granted that grant. So we are going to have a uh a a milk cooler along with um some other things that are uh the consent agenda, because it's a certain dollar amount that we have to have have it approved um as a donation or as a gift. But that was kind of a a big deal. Um and then the other thing is that we have um signed on to use the Healthy Pro software. This comes with pre-generated um recipes that all meet the USDA requirements. Um we're learning that program right now, and that should help help us stabilize what we're serving, how much we're serving, how much to make. Um that'll help us to keep track of all that uh all those numbers. And we already know that it's already pre-approved by anything, so it's not the question of, oh, is this gonna meet the requirements of the federal food program? So it's already already in there. So we're starting to learn that, which I think is also gonna be a good step. So that's just an update from our food service area that I wanted to share, because that was some good news about the grant and the homemade meals. So let's. With that, I'll be quiet and I will turn it over again to Principal Mary Ann Klein for the elementary principals report.
Typically, in October, I give you guys a little update as to our behaviors. So far this year, we've had five major office referrals and nine minor behavioral referrals. Um interestingly, looking at that, it's a lot of anger and aggression that we're seeing, not necessarily aimed at other people. But outbursts that are unexpected in a classroom, um which aren't okay, because they detract from other people's. So uh we've talked at grade-level team meetings, we've also talked uh between school psych counselor, myself, what can we be doing to target um our kiddos who are bubbling up right now? And uh last year, we advocated for the bridge community clinic counselor to add a third day. And we're now starting to suggest to parents that if your kid has some concerns with anger and aggression, perhaps counseling from a licensed clinical therapist is the way to go. Because, right, like, we're here to learn. And obviously, if you're that angry and upset, we're not making it into a learning mentality yet. Um we do all kinds of tier one. Obviously, we do our hornet pride, we do talking about our matrix of responsibility, respectfulness, and caring. We teach social emotional lessons through second staff. Jillian pulls kids and does small group and individual counseling as well, which is different than clinical counseling. Um Dory pulls kids as well and does some counseling within what's within her realm. Her realm is different than Jillian's realm, so we're trying to get as much support as we can for some of our kiddos who are having some more explosive behaviors. Most of the explosive behaviors are coming from students who are already identified with a disability of some sort. So we we know that they already have some concerns that we've been working toward through special education as well. Uh annual bullying report in the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. We did have one instance of bullying that after delving into met the threshold of being repetitive imbalance of power. Um a lot of times, we throw around, we meaning people in general throw around the word bullying. If I tell Chris that, you know, he's too skinny. Well, that's not bullying unless I do that all the time purposely to make him feel bad or to pull others in and show that I have power over him. Um so we do investigate a lot of mean moments that become that are classified as mean moments and not bullying, that rise to that level of bullying. So we did have one last year, which is one more than we had the previous year. Any questions on last year's bullying or this year's? All right, any other questions about what's happening down by us?
All right, moving on to middle school and high school, Chris, maybe a little stuff?
Uh we already obviously addressed the turn of the month, but I have to tell you, Rochelle, uh we have a great student body here. And um it's just been great to get to know the kids this last month and uh we have so many kids to celebrate in September. So that's great. And homecoming was wonderful, uh it was really super positive. What I heard was that from last year to this year, there was a lot more student participation. Um we did not have kids on their phones. Um I think I addressed two phone situations that day, but otherwise, kids were participating, their heads were up, talking, um even outdoors, a lot of participation. And um no issues with phones, I think that that maybe went long ways in helping that participation. But um that's I heard that feedback from staff. Uh the day was very well organized, I have to give a lot of credit to the senior advisors, they did a fabulous job organizing that and all the class advisors. Um they did a lot of work with the kids in rad at the time um to make that day so successful. So it was great to see all the kids participate in all the games and everything else, it just really ramped up our school spirit. Um and we're already kind of talking about some things for next year that we can add to the week to um grow it a little bit. So that's been positive. Um parent teacher conference attendance. Then I put the I did not put the numbers on there. Okay, so um we had um an increase from twenty-four percent last year from the high school participation to forty percent this year for ninth through twelfth graders. And then um thought I'd put it on the board report for you. But for middle school, for just seventh and eighth grade, so obviously, we didn't have sixth grade last year, we also saw an increase um in in participation. So I just wanted to let you know that um that was just also a positive gift, um parents in our building and you have those parent teacher interactions. Um what else? So um later on, you'll uh see on your consent agenda um an early graduation request. The other item on there would be field trips. Um the ninth and twelfth graders on the challenge day on October twenty-eighth, the ninth and twelfth grader will be um will be doing um a college visit at UW Oshkosh and also at Fox Valley Tech. We were able to get that in. Um and Colton worked extremely hard to make that happen in a short amount of time, just given my transition. Um Colton welcomed the new baby and had all of that going on. And so um just a big thanks to him for getting that all wrapped up. But the ninth graders will also be touring the foundry. So the ninth graders will go on a bus and the twelfth graders will go on a bus, they will not be together, and they have separate agendas. So um the ninth graders will also be going to the foundry um to tour everything from production to the business office, et cetera. Um then they'll be headed to UW Oshkosh, and then after that, they'll flip-flop and go to, no, they're not going to Fox Valley Tech, the twelfth graders are going this year there. Um and I've talked to a few kids about it, and um we have a few kids that are wanting to see back because of work release. But several kids have talked to me about um being excited just to have the opportunity to go check it out. So um I'm hoping that that'll be a positive day, and our teachers are excited to go um along with them as well. Um we also have um an FFA field trip request that will be coming up in November. And Miss um Bucknell wanted me to pass this along um about the mission conference. Uh the Rockhold FFA chapter is excited to take our rising leaders to the mission conference designed specifically for freshmen and sophomores. This conference focuses on helping students begin their leadership journey through self-discovery and personal growth. Throughout the event, members will explore what makes them unique and learn valuable strategies to strengthen their confidence, values, decision-making, and leadership skills. The conference experience concludes with each student developing their own personal mission statement, setting the foundation for their leadership path within FFA and beyond. By attending the mission conference, Rochelle FFA members will gain insight into their strengths, discover new ways to lead, and return ready to take on greater roles within our chapter and community. Um so initially, we had also had the impact conference, but no um upperclassmen signed up, so that one um will not be will not be happening. Um that one will be sponsored by the Rochelle FFA alumni or the FFA chapter. So and then the last thing that I have for you is just an athletic handbook update. Uh in reading through it, um so this is my rookie year, so I'm learning some things as I go, this is one of them. So we had the previous policy set the time limit for student athletes to get to school at noon. Um which didn't even require them to be here for half the day. And so I just would like to change noon to eleven o'clock. Um and so you can see the change there at the bottom. I just wanted to read a participant who misses school in the afternoon of contest is ineligible to practice or compete that afternoon or evening unless pre-approved by the principal. The participant must be in school by eleven AM to participate. Only the principal may waive this requirement, and only in extreme emergency situations will this rule be waived. Um I wanted to create a little bit more flexibility in that, because um just the way that it was ordered before with what do we have? Um like, if if certain situations come up that students have to be gone in the afternoon. Um I just would like the a timing, I guess, and the flexibility to allow that. Because I don't know, just certain things might come up for them, whether it be appointments or whatnot. And under the old language, they wouldn't be able to participate. But it also holds them accountable for getting to school and having a valid reason of why we're missing school to begin with. Um so it doesn't change any of the requirements, really, it just changes uh the time. Need questions about any of that? Or anything else that you'd like to know about?
Go Hornets, by the way, just away tonight. Second round of the playoffs against Lobina Leona.
Do we have any score difference?
It'll start at seven.
Oh, it'll start at seven.
So it's currently zero.
Twenty-two minutes, thanks, Mary. You're always on it.
It's zero, zero.
It's gonna be a tough one tonight, I think. It'll be a challenge, absolutely, yeah, pretty good.
Okay, thank you, ladies. All right, consented agenda.
Uh there's a number of things here, uh on your uh papers, you'll notice that there should be something on the resignations or retirements. Um and that person uh came in today and wanted to rescind that resignation. So I took it off of my copy, so that is no longer included. There was some some misunderstanding about different terms and different allotments that um again, this afternoon, we tried to clarify. Um individual admitted they may have overreacted a little bit to some information that they received. So they'd like to continue through the fall, and then I I kind of said, uh because it's a it's a fall um and a spring um agreement. I've said by the end of November, once the fall process is done, they've had the chance to reflect on on the fall. Let me know if you if they want to continue with the spring. So we were able to clarify that, the rescinded that resignation is no longer on the agenda, so cross that one under off under the consent agenda. Uh however, we do have a number of contracts there. Uh we have, we we found an assistant boys basketball coach, uh that is Aaron Stroud. Um we have a middle school basketball coach in Tim Uer Jones, um with previous experience in uh Iola. We have a middle school basketball coach in Mark Garza, one of our new pair of professionals through Meredith County Special Ed. We have a middle school girls basketball coach in Julia Cantors. Um she is also, she's she was a middle school volleyball coach and is now continuing in the middle school girls basketball. Um we're asking the board to approve a bus driver coming back to us. Gerard, um knowing that we've had a number of a number of of bus drivers that have had medical reasons or um have otherwise been unable to drive, um knowing that we have called him a lot to sub, he approached me last week and said, you know, instead of filling out the sub sheet, maybe I just fill out the regular sheet, I can do this route, it's my old route, I can do it for the whole year. Okay, thank you, Ray, because we're kind of in a hurt box. So um we're asking the board to approve him coming back and finishing out the year, and he goes, this is my only year, not doing this full this uh but then to the end, I can do it, I'm like, fair enough. So um and then we uh we did have somebody that uh was interested in a part-time bus mechanic. So Mac uh so so yeah, so
So yeah.
Sylvia. Um has five, six years working at what used to be the Scafidi Truck Center, working on diesel engines, working on air brakes, working on um tractors and trailers. And then for the last, I want to say it's three or four years, has been uh has has moved and shifted a little bit and is working more on like forklifts um and and smaller machinery like that. Um lives in district, has students in district, um currently works Monday, Tuesday, and then Thursday, Friday. So Wednesdays is kind of kind of looking to fill that in a little bit. Um not so much the weekends, because he does have family, young young children, wants to stay with that. Um and because this is kind of a an interesting and a and a unique position. Um I asked him what his current wage is, and his current wage is is far above what we're offering, and this is far above from from what we were currently paying. Um and the justification I have uh for this uh this wage is that he is ASE certified, he has worked on the bricks, he's got the certifications. When our our previous part-time mechanic didn't have that, was kind of a a person that could fix things, but wasn't certified. This heck is, this gentleman has the certifications. Um so he 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 said this would be fine, even though it's less than what he's making now, because it's so close to his house. He he's literally a mile away. Um and up for board approval, but that this will allow us to have some of that mechanical things, some of those mechanical things. We we purchased the reader, so now we can read it, but now we have a a trained, a licensed person that can actually order the parts and fix that. Um today, we're sitting out on the bus line, and we had one bus that started throwing codes, was still running, and bus five wouldn't start, and it came up and it started, it came here. And then all of a sudden, I said, engine warning, engine warning, and it was sitting there. Um I went out to check on it afterwards, it was after the routes, and they were back trying to figure out how they could get it started. So um hopefully, when we have that situation, we now have a qualified mechanic that can um that can look into that problem, fix it, and hopefully fix it. Um it it within the timeframe that we that we have, because I've seen if we have a a bus that's down, but another bus that goes down, another then all of a sudden, we're running trips and and our regular routes are running for running short. Um arguably, when we tow it to Ascendance and and come back, we're we're talking a couple hundred dollars just to have them look at it, right? Because you gotta tow it there, you gotta have their mechanics, um so this is the person that could be at home. So we're recommending that we um hire uh Mac with with those terms, um just because it's uh somebody local that knows what they're doing, that that hopefully can uh can serve us well. And that's the time to do it, because again, that four days a week helps us out, because then we can have one day a week. What we got, we do have the board approved field trips that uh we we heard about from Mr. Styles. And then um again, this is the grant award, uh because of the dollar amount of the different pieces of of equipment. We have fourteen, twenty-four, nine, thirty-four, that all adds up to quite a bit of a of a grant award. Um again, at the very bottom, is this is donated donated to a district at no cost to us, and it's going right to the food service department. So um want to make sure that uh we put that in the the consent agenda, so we have official board approval to accept that grant from the dairy farmers. And lastly, we have the September uh meeting minutes, so hopefully, everybody's had a chance to click on that link and look through those to make sure they were appropriate. And that ends the consent agenda for this evening.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns about anything that's on the consented agenda? Or clarifications?
Quite a bit in there tonight.
Yeah, there is. Uh and since no one has any um concerns or questions, do I have a motion to approve the consented agenda? Okay, Chris, is there a second?
I'll second.
Matt, okay, motion has been made in second to approve the consented. Matt, okay, motion has been made in second to approve the consented agenda. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion is carried as we move on to approval of bills with financial statements. Did you hear from anybody today, Dennis?
I did not receive any requests for further information or any questions via email, phone, text, anything, so.
Did anybody have a question that maybe they didn't get a chance to contact Dennis? Okay, if not, then we we need a motion and a second to approve the bills with financial statements. Okay, Angela, do I have a second? James is second. Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve the bills with financial statements. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion is carried. Old business.
So we have a discussion of possible decision on board policy updates, thirty-four dash one. Uh, again, these were presented last month. Um, uh, in the the folder, the policy folder. Open to any conversations, any questions we have about specific policies. Um, otherwise, uh, if we've had a chance to look at those and everything seems to be appropriate, looks appropriate, again, red is the strike, green is the add. Um, we can look at some of them if there's questions, otherwise if there's no questions, um, would entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
Did anybody have any concerns or questions about any of them? Hey, well, hearing no or seeing nobody shaking their heads, I need a motion and a second to approve the policy update folder.
Make motion.
Okay, Matt, and do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Chris, I make a motion and second, a motion has been made in second to approve the policy update. Um, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? All right, motion has been carried. And look who's here.
Yeah, Carla, who made the motion second? I just didn't catch it.
Chris.
Chris made the motion second.
Matt.
Good, thank you.
Well, welcome, Melatics. How are you?
We're not late, are we?
You said seven.
Well, I wasn't here and I'm wondering if the letter that typed that typed up said seven.
That's okay. We will stop, we will.
We'll circle that.
Okay, so. I was wondering who she belonged to.
Yeah.
James, you were James, I know now. Well, I wasn't going to shout across, who does she belong to?
From home.
From home, yeah.
Well, I'm gonna turn it back over to Mr. Styles to talk uh about the process a little bit and um specifically then what teachers had to say.
Thank you for coming, love, that you're here. Um, we're excited to nominate Georgie for the top student of the month uh for September. Um, her teachers say that she has demonstrated a strong work ethic by continually being prepared for class, taking pride in her work, being a leader in classroom discussions and going above and beyond to master the content on our own time using optional resources. She is always smiling and willing to put her best effort into difficult tasks. He inspires her and says some very lovely things about you too, that you're always smiling and coming to class and that you're just a pleasure to teach because um you just love to learn and you're a pleasure to have. She used the word radiant.
You radiant when you walk into the room is what she said. And that you always are willing to help other kids without having been asked to help them, which is really cool, unlike your father.
She knows me.
I've known your father since a long time. Okay.
Get the same in front of the big.
Yeah.
And Mr. Dembélé has a two ten paper, and now we have to smile.
Just to be sure, you know, her eyes closed.
Did you get what you needed?
Do I get your game?
Yeah. Okay, all right, thank you.
You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting, you can go.
Thank you, sorry for being late.
If you want to sit around us or hang out for a minute.
You're gonna find it so interesting.
You know, I'm on a call, so.
There is always an excuse.
Keep that in line, okay?
I mean, she told me she was not coming.
Oh, okay.
She had dance.
Oh, yeah, Isabella, she told Steve she wasn't coming tonight, because, yeah.
I apologize.
Well, you're the. We're flexible.
I'm just as glad as she came.
Yes, I am too. All right, we are now on new business. The discussion of possible off official mill rate. Dennis, it's up to you now.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
So the official mill rate for the twenty-five, twenty-six, um, school, actually the twenty-two, twenty-six, but um decided during the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Uh, what I'm showing on the screen right now is the second attachment that was on the board packet. And basically, this is the August information where we said, hey, we think we're going to be at um, you know, four million, seven hundred twenty thousand and some change. Where we're going to be at a seven, eight, two. And we knew that was. If you remember, I I mentioned to the board that shortly after this information came out is when we received our projections for our our property values. That would weigh up and we were anticipating a very conservative three-ish percent. Um, and then they came back at like twelve, thirteen, fourteen for different municipalities. So we knew that this was going to be different and the comparison then is we go down to um the the the. Bottom of of what is current now, um, that value i- is is now uh, we're looking at. Uh, a seven point, well, seven point one one mill rate. And and again, remember, there's an inverse relationship, right? Because if I have a two hundred thousand dollar house and ten percent is two thousand and my house goes to four hundred thousand. Ten percent would be would be four thousand, right? It, but it doesn't work like that. It goes down because the tax would would be the same. And if, the only thing that changes the value of the house, now it's a five percent to be at two thousand. So. As values go up, the mill rate drops just because it drops, right? So um, it's an inverse relationship with the property values going up and the levy going down. So we knew it was going to be lower. So what we're asking the board to um, to approve is to approve this new tax levy of four million, eight oh eight, six forty-six. And the mill rate of seven eleven for this next year. It was the. Four million, seven eighty-eight, and now we got the four million, eight oh eight, seven, what was it, eighty-two, seven eighty-two to seven eleven. That's the, and that's the, that's the goofy part about having our annual meeting earlier. But if I would have had the annual meeting today with the seven eighty-eight and now a half hour later we say seven eleven, people are like, what's going on? So we try to have that annual meeting a little bit different because we know that once we receive our real data from the state and on October fifteenth, these amounts are going to adjust. Once we get that um, that that certain uh property value increase, these numbers change.
Yes, and they changed too from August is our September um third Friday count. Our, it actually increased our. Our running average, our per average membership um over the last three years. So we are getting more per pupil aid. And then the other thing is that our. Private school voucher exemptions actually increased, which again, they're giving more money to private schools, but that's basically telling us. It's raising our revenue limit, meaning we can tax more. It's not more aid for us. It's more an exemption saying you can, you can not tax more.
Which is great, but it also. Tells the public that, oh, the school is raising my taxes, but it's not really. In essence, we we don't have control over that, which is frustrating.
Dennis, I want to ask you, maybe I should know this, but why, if the properties go up, why does the mill rate go down?
If the, say, it's gonna.
Because we're capped.
Yeah.
Because we can only have so much pie. So if they say this is worth more. It comes from a different place.
It has to go down in order to make it. You're gonna stay in the mount. X mount. So it's just a matter of how that looks.
Where we get it from.
Yeah.
What was our mill rate last year?
Um, I don't remember. I can pull that up, though. Um. Let me go into the annual meeting booklet. So mill rate last year was seven, three, three. We anticipated it was going to go to seven, eight, two. And again, that information, because of the posting and the timing and everything else, has to be out there quite early. Um, and now we're coming in and real numbers, once we've collected the the property values and received our aid from the state, we're at seven, eleven. So seven, three, three down to seven, eleven, I'm sure. And again, I, let's go back a decade. We're at ten point one one, right? And I do believe that I I I've heard from people, um, when this current referendum was passed, the promise was to keep the levy below ten. Now, as you can see, for the last decade, we've been in the nines and then recently, you know, went from nine to eight, three, three to seven, nine, one, seven, three, three, now seven, eleven. So um, with the referendum, once we have our consultants and our financial partner Baird take a look at our data. Um, we will work on trying to figure out what the what the need of the district is. And then in all likelihood, ask the community to get that back towards the um, towards the eight, maybe a little over eight. Maybe eight and a half. I don't, I don't know where it's going to end, but that's what we'll be asking um the referendum. We'll figure that out in the next few months, bring that to the board. And then as we did last time, the board will approve the resolution. Um, and then that goes forward to be the ask of the community on the ballot in April. If you look here, um. This year, this is, this is membership now. This is not enrollment. Remember, membership is, are all those students within our boundaries. Enrollment is those people that are here. We are now at uh five, twenty-two after third Friday. And last year, um, let's see, was that the adjusted one? Yeah, so that's adjusted. So it's the bottom number. So last year, we were at five, nineteen. There is exemption for declining enrollment. We didn't decline, so that exemption freezes, which. If you, if you go down one or two students, it's okay, because then you you're, you you have that exemption to the revenue limit, right? And as soon as you start going the other way, uh, it takes the three-year average, so it takes a while. Now, um, if you go one or two, it's not too bad. Um, what really is frustrating for school districts is if you drop forty kids or gain forty students. Because now you have forty students that you're not going to receive any more aid for probably three years because of the three-year rolling average. And if you lose them, you're not going to get the full exemption for three years, but yet. You you have that declining enrollment. So it does work off the three-year average. Any other questions? Otherwise, if not, I would ask for a motion and a second to approve four million, eight. Hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars as the tax levy, which equates to a mill rate of seven point one one.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
James, okay, sir, a second?
I'll second.
Matt was second. Okay, a motion has been made, second to approve the official middle weight for two thousand, twenty-five, twenty-six to be seven point eleven, right? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion is carried. Discussion on possible decision on the certification of acceptance of donation for the real estate in Stevens Point, Wisconsin for CISA five.
CISA is made up of its member schools. Uh, we are one of the member schools. They have a, for the the past several years, rented a facility in Wapata. That facility has been uh sold and um. It is is no longer an option. Um, they had moved or are in the process of moving to Stevens Point. Um, there's a building there that um all of a sudden then the owner said, hey, we could donate this to CISA. Um, there is some repair and renovation costs there, but CISA's um, saying that that should be covered and and the buyback would be only four years in in those repairs. Each board has to vote on it and the majority rules, so I think uh the, it had to be decided by tomorrow. Um, so this is the last possible day for the board to meet and decide on it. So I don't know what the other school districts have have said. But if it's an opportunity for CISA to actually have an alternative um, an alternative setting in our CISA district. Wapata is not in our CISA, but that's where we would have to send our students that couldn't um, couldn't manage regular public school. Um, Mr. Bolti and I did go over and and tour that, um, and took a look at the Wapata school. If there's something that would be closer, that's a benefit to us. If it's something that's within our CISA, that's a benefit to our CISA. Um, I don't see a reason to to say no to this because again, if it's something that could better serve our kids in that need, I think that it would be good for those students that would would require that, so.
Do I have a motion to approve the Stevens Point real estate donation for CISA five as discussed? Chris, okay, I'll second it to approve this. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carried. Okay, discussion of possible decision on ECCP student courses. I believe Colton is here.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bolti to explain this again and uh answer any questions you have.
Well, I guess, do we have any questions on like the Start College Now or ECCP? Those those are. Oh, okay. So like this year, we have three students who signed up for ECCP or early college credit program. Um, two of those students will reach their eighteen credit max with this. Um, so they're, they can only take two courses. And then one student only signed up for one course. Um, so the budget there for the ECCP is um. You know, a total, if they both took those two classes to get their eighteen um credits and then the one student took their one, it'd be like two thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. Uh, we get reimbursed fifty percents. Um, sorry, we, we pay. Um, so really, it's gonna be one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars there. Um, for then Start College Now, we got two students who signed up for that. If they took three classes, I don't think they're going to take three classes, but I usually budget that way. So if they took three classes, because that's the most I've seen really someone take. That would be a total of three thousand and twenty-three dollars, twenty-two cents. Um, with Start College Now, we pay the total cost of that, so.
Just to remind the board, the ECCP is college credit. Start College Now is is technical, uh, school credit. Several years ago, uh, we had a conversation because by statute, a student is um able to take up to eighteen credits. Um, and we had a conversation at point to um, to talk about, well, could they take, if we offer biology here, could they take biology? And the conversation at that point was, as long as they take it here first and then they want to take biology after they take biology here, for example. Why not? Because they can take eighteen credits of whatever, right? So if they could take biology here and then if that sets enough to get a better grade or do better on their college course, why not allow them to take biology even though we offer it here? They would just have to take it here first, because there was um commentary or questions about, okay, if everybody just goes and takes college credit, credits, then we're going to reduce our staff by two or three. And that's not what we want to have happen, um, because we value our local education. But again, if if somebody's going to take up to eighteen credits. What does it matter what they're taking? Because again, that's going to potentially save them um credits to take in the future. So just go back story on that.
Really, that alternative route there, it actually helps protect teacher FTE, um, because that, those credits are not going to transfer onto our transcript because they already have that biology grade on there. Um, so really, they don't have the opportunity to take a college class over a class that we we offer here. They have to do it on their own time. So it really actually protects teacher FTE.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Mr. Bolti? Okay, well, let's do the ECCP student courses first. Any motion to approve the courses as discussed?
I'll make it.
Angela, is there a second? James is second it. Okay, a motion has been made in second to approve the ECCP student courses as discussed. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion is carried. Now we'll do the approved Start College Now courses as discussed.
I'll make it.
Okay, Matt, I'll second it to approve the Start College Now courses as discussed. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Those opposed? Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah.
You're back in kindergarten, Carla.
Yes, ma'am.
Too. I keep calling him Colt. I don't call him Colton.
Colt forty-four.
Okay. I'll add that to my. School vehicle, school vehicle purchase, fleet purchase.
Um, so yes, um, school vehicle fleet purchase. I don't have for the board, a specific vehicle to consider tonight. What I have is kind of a, a story of where we're at with our buses, with our, um, vans, with our, our trucks and, and that type of thing. Um, presently, our current situation is we, we, we try to purchase a bus every other year, um, to renew that fleet. Um, realistically with the mileage in the back road and the dirt and the salt and whatever else, our buses start to rust out pretty good at about twelve, thirteen, fifteen years, somewhere in that area. We, we might be able to extend it to twenty. They would run and they, the drive train would work, but the bodies are starting to rust out, uh, by the time we get to twenty years. Um, so that's been kind of, since I've got here and a little bit before I got here, it seems like it was every other year, um, for a school bus purchase. We currently have seven routes. We have fourteen buses and until tonight, we had fourteen working buses. Um, now we have thirteen working buses with one of those that's working, still throwing an error code and one that has a warning light that would not start when it got to the line tonight. So we could be looking at twelve working buses, seven routes. It gives us five spares, um, or five for trip buses. Well, we all know in spring, when you have the baseball team, a softball team, a track, I mean, we start in a, throw in a field trip or something, um, those, those non-route buses start to get used up as well. Um, we are at a point where several sports teams are small enough that they could use an individual vehicle. When I say individual vehicle, I mean like a school van, um, or, uh, a smaller vehicle that we wouldn't need a bus or a bus driver. Our present cross country has, um, five or six girls and one male student. So that entire cross country team could go in our white van, um, or our minivan. Um, in the past, last year, our, our girls' basketball program was seven students. Um, so the, the coach and those seven students could ride in the white van and with the minivan. Um, in the past, our wrestling team has been small enough and I hope it's not that small this year. Um, but we did graduate some seniors. We wanted to see how many, um, freshmen we have or other, um, other high schools come out for wrestling, but that in the past has been something that has been used, uh, using our vans as well. As of last year, we, we have multiple people that, um, do not feel comfortable in our big white van. Um, that is a two-wheel drive van. It is big and bulky. It catches the wind, which we all know in the winter, when there's no leaves on the trees, we have more wind shears than others. Um, to the, to that point, we, one, uh, one, one trip, they opened up the driver's door and the wind took it and and bent it right around the wheel well, and they had to kind of slam it back into place to get it home. Um, and then we were able to dock it around. So it was usable. And then, um, or earlier this summer, we were actually able to, to fix that and replace that door. But it's not comfortable to drive. I've driven it to Iowa and, uh, to Iowa and back. It's not bad, but it shimmies at fifty-seven-ish miles an hour. So if you're expecting somebody to take that, which we are expecting them to, uh, FFA to take that to Indianapolis, at least we're anticipating that going to Indianapolis. I don't know what it's going to do at seventy-two or seventy-ish miles an hour. Um, it's not really conducive to that. Um, last I heard that our, our numbers had dwindled a little bit, so they may be able to take our, our minivan that has the seats, which would be much better option. That's, that's more worthy. So as we were sitting here thinking, um, I did reach out to our, uh, liability and our automobile, automobile insurance because in statutes for state of Wisconsin, we cannot purchase something that's going to be over ten passenger. But what happens is when you get this Ford Transit newer van, what it, it's really meant for twelve or fifteen and they take out seats and they go, oh, it's only ten. It's not about that. It's about the rollover and how strong the roof is and will that roof hold up in a rollover accident? Um, is it going to catch wind shears and, and go off the road on a, on a more easily, uh, or easier basis? That's what the liability insurance talks about, and that's what the statute's meant to protect. Um, I think we've all seen, you know, some of these big passenger vans. We've seen vans, um, at clinics. We've seen church vans that have these, you know, huge capacities, you know, fifteen, twenty people can fit into those. Um, frankly, where I'm from, we have some Amish individuals that climb into a van and, and go to town and there's like, you know, twenty people in that van. That's not safe, not safe for kids. So as we've been talking here a little bit, in our present vehicle fleet, um, we have one big white van. We have one passenger minivan, one handicap chair accessible minivan. We have one pickup truck that my understanding is we've replaced the motor. We've replaced the transmission to the tune of, we probably paid for that truck two and a half times with all the repairs that we've done to it. Um, and it's still acting up. And we have the big dump, um, that is also kind of a plow truck. Those are kind of our five vehicles. We did liquidate our, uh, the little car that we had. It was a Chevy Malibu Max. Um, we liquidated that last year, the year before. Um, so with this proposal, it's not about a specific vehicle, but it's about a plan like going forward between twenty-five and twenty-seven, over the next two years, I'm asking the board for permission to seek out and purchase a high quality used vehicle. And in my mind, I'm thinking more of a suburban or an expedition type of vehicle. It's similar to our minivan, but it's four-wheel drive for winter travel. It's not the high profile that our, um, our, our big white van is. Um, it's a little bit more comfortable to drive. So people feel a little bit more in control and it's not as big as the wind shear. So yes, it's bigger where it's going to catch, um, some wind, but it's not going to be the same as that big van. Um, ideally in a perfect world, uh, I would say we would get two suburban-ish vehicles, um, replace the truck. And then one thing that we still do is we, we rely on FERCUS lumber to bring their forklift up or their tractor up and, and get things off of our semis. So that would be something else that we would be looking to do. Now, again, right now we're getting a bus every two years. I'm recommending that we push that back to a third year. So we took delivery of a bus here in twenty-five. If we back that up to twenty-eight, then maybe we could, you know, plan on, on a portion of these vehicles, um, throughout the next two years rather than buy that and a bus. Um, right now, a brand new suburban is between, yeah, sixty-eight to seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, I was able to go out there and look at one that was nine, ten years old with seventy-ish thousand miles on it. Again, I don't know the engine yet. I didn't go look at it, but those are selling in the, the thirty-five range. So you can almost get a two for one with a slightly used, um, most of those Suburbans and expedition type vehicles, um, will go well beyond a hundred, two hundred thousand miles if we take care of them. So that's kind of, uh, the, the plan that I see moving forward. It would be an opportunity to allow some of our, um, cause right now frankly, our staff, we ask them to, to drive a school vehicle first. If, if they are uncomfortable doing that, we ask them to fill up when they leave and then when they come back, fill up again and, and, and do the actual, uh, fuel that has, has been set. Uh, and then if that is, and sometimes that's not realistic, um, and then we will, will pay the government rate, which is now seventy cents per mile. Um, which even on a short trip that you might, you might go twenty-five miles there and back. So fifty miles, um, and you're getting, you know, thirty-eight bucks for that. And you could fill up your car maybe one and a half times for thirty-eight bucks. Now, again, it's we're tearing on the, on the oil and the tires and everything else. I get that. Um, but if we had, the, the point I'm getting at is if we had vehicles that were in good repair, that were more, um, more individual, family oriented and less industrial or large capacity like our van. I think, uh, there would be people that would use them more. And then when we have our winter seasons that seem to be, um, and, and even some of our spring and our, and our fall season that could use, um, those vehicles for their sports. They would feel more comfortable with more, with the four by four, with a more, um, uh, individual type vehicle, family type vehicle than an industrial vehicle. So that's kind of, um, it's an idea. It's a vision. It's not a specific vehicle to make a purchase. Um, but if we, if that sounds good, over the next two years, we would like to, to investigate that in, in lieu of a bus, that second year, every two years, and we push that back to that third year. So open to questions.
So you want the pickup truck and haul truck and the tractor would also be used then? Or would you be looking at something?
Ideally, so the pickup truck that we have is acting up. We've, we've done a bunch of repairs. We, we would, um, seek to liquidate that and, and purchase a newer one. Um, one that's in better repair. But yes, it would be all one vehicle again, used, uh, because again, you buy new, you drive it off a lot, you automatically lose ten, fifteen percent, right, of value. Um, so there are some four by four trucks that, uh, that are either A, ready for a plow or B, can handle a plow and they'll be, um, can figure that to, because we, we have the plows. Right? The question is getting the wind system and hookups. So.
If I really get like buying, um, like sometimes rental vehicles, you know, they got ten thousand miles on it. Very much cheaper. So.
Yeah.
That's an option too, but like we used to have suburban and they drive small. They don't, they're big, but they don't drive that big. And you have an expedition that, I mean, they don't, they're big, but they don't drive big. It's, it's, it's different. It's weird.
Why?
It's a good weird.
Why would we not look at another van? Those are going to be considerably cheaper than an expedition or a suburban.
So if we look at a van, I would not look at a big van. I would look at a minivan, which we can do.
I mean, you're looking at a, a huge price difference between a suburban or expedition style SUV compared to a van. And they're going to hold, hold the same people. They hold seven or eight people is what they hold. And the newer, the newer vans, the minivans, you can get them all wheel drive. So if you're looking at something like that for that reason, you're still looking at saving a boatload of money compared to spending the money on, on Suburbans and expeditions and, or anything of that size.
Any caveat to that is that if we a- anticipate that, um, like say, say like the Indianapolis trip for FFA, um, the minivan is going to have a far less storage, uh, for overnight bags because most of those trips are multiple nights. Um, so we would, we would want some storage capability in the vehicle, uh, for the, just for this luggage and overnight bags. Um, most of our, like a cross-country team, there's not a whole lot of storage necessary, right? Basketball, you might have a different backpack with shoes and whatever else to change into. Um, obviously if it was a baseball or softball and you took two Suburbans, you would want some storage for the bats and the balls and helmets and you have more equipment to go along with that. So that would be, um, one of the reasons that I would support the, uh, the suburban-ish type vehicle rather than a minivan. Um, the minivans that I saw, they're, um, they are a little cheaper. That I, I, I don't know that they're, they're a ton cheaper.
Could buy one for forty. Brand new all wheel drive.
Like a Honda or?
No, like a race surface. Brand new all wheel drive, forty grand.
Then it's, it's, it's got the same seating capacity. It's got seven, right?
I guess something we could look at with that, if you want to do that option, maybe we could get like a little trailer, something that would be open on a minivan, you know, to haul.
That's scary though, too.
I just can't park it.
Can't back it up. Get up on it, okay, back up. Okay.
Tractor, what, I mean, what's the, so reasoning being the tractor, I mean, we haven't.
It's been, it's been on the want list forever.
Yeah.
And we've, we've always bypassed it and we rely on FERCUS lumber to come up and help us unload our semis, um, which.
But if it's just for that, if it's just for the unloading purposes, we should be looking at buying a used forklift instead of a, a tractor because.
I, I do believe that, uh, Tom would like to use it for the lawn maintenance as well.
I'm, I'm sure he would, but there's, there's budgets, right? And there's reasons why.
Well, and that's the caveat, right? There, there is no money in the budget for this.
Yeah.
Um, and, and what I'm suggesting is that, you know, we take the potential, um, bus budget that we would spend in the, i- it, when we take delivery of it in twenty-seven, push that back by a year and then over the next two years, because a bus is, is one fifty, right? Um, uh, that was our bus, we, we had some special things with it this year. Um, what we've heard from our bus companies is if you, if we could have bought another one this year, we should have because again, just like everything else, what, what used to, like when I first got here, we bought a bus for ninety-eight. That was just a standard plain Jane bus. That standard plain Jane bus, if we would have bought one this year is one thirty-eight. Next year it's going to be one forty-eight. The next year after that's one fifty-five. So right back to the same price that we paid for this handicap lift underneath storage bus. So if we, if we postpone that by a year and reconfigure that one fifty or one forty, whatever we would spend on that bus and do seventy each of the years, then maybe we can, we can get into, um, some of these other vehicles that would allow our staff to use them for conferences, allow our sports teams to use them for their events, allow our organizations to use them for those long distance travels because right now we have one vehicle that might make it to Indianapolis and that's our, our minivan.
I'm, I'm not disagreeing with it, but I don't, I mean, pushing off of, of a bus by for one year and then spending that amount of money still in those two years that we'd be buying the bus in on vehicles. Why are we even pushing it off then, right? Why not just order it? You're, you're still spending the money. You know, you're still spending that hundred and twenty, twenty thousand dollars. If you're looking at buying two Suburbans, a plow truck and a tractor, that's a hundred, that's a hundred.
Is a hundred. Split over two years at fifty each.
Yeah.
As opposed to a hundred and fifty one year or a hundred and fifty.
But we're, we're pushing, but you know what I mean? We're pushing off, we're pushing off one thirty to spend a hundred. But we're only pushing it off for a year. So, you know, so it's, to me, I don't know. I don't, I don't think we need a tractor, in my opinion. I think we should be looking, I get it. He, everyone wants one. I would love to have one, right? I mean, that's just a part of life, but. Even the used ones are so expensive. They're crazy. If you want any kind of four-wheel driver and if you want to hold her on it, this, any of, yeah. And if that's the reason we're worried about it is because we have FERCUS coming up here to unload it, I would one hundred percent be looking for a used forklift because you can pick those up for under five grand.
And now we have a mechanic that can work off.
You know, and, and, and it can just be here, right? We need to unload it. Perfect. It's here. You unload it, you take it off. It's not like, because a tractor is going to have way more maintenance on it, way more upkeep on the thing because they're going to be using it for everything. He brings that LP one he has down there up here to unload it? I don't even know.
But if it's a load outside, I mean, just, just look at things that we're gonna, it's gonna be outside and the forklift has got to be outside ready like for snow and things like that. It can't be just a, you know, smooth wheel inside forklift that, that's the case.
I think that's what he's got. That's what he, that's what they run. It's just, yeah, it's just a smooth wheel.
Oh.
Because up here, if you think of it, it's just a semi backing up either on our parking lot or the road. So realistically, it doesn't have to be an off-road.
How many times does that happen in a year?
In a year? I don't.
Well, in a school year, I mean.
We don't have a loading dock, right? So, uh, many times like the, the food service, they can, a lot of times with the food service, they have like the, the, the drop gate.
Yeah.
So they'll put on a gate, they'll drop it down and then we can just dolly it off there.
Yeah.
But every now and then we will have deliveries, um, more, more so in the summer where they just, um, they, they back it up and they park right there and they come up and they slide it out to the edge and FERCUS comes in to your point, gets it on the ground and then, um, we dolly it to wherever it needs to go. Or if it's on a big pallet, then we set it outside the door, unwrap it and then take it inside and.
Put it in carts.
It's piecemeal on carts.
You know, if we're, we're talking about buying a tractor for that reason.
What we get a skid steer, we can put a plow on that for.
We just buy everybody a shovel.
If you're looking at buying something, right? Like, I mean, in a way, that's the best way. Instead of buying a plow truck, if you want to buy something to plow snow, because we farm up plowing, plowing our snow, right? We don't do it ourselves, do we?
We do, we do, yeah, we do.
All of it?
Not all of it, but we do some.
You know, skid steers are expensive. But, but instead of buying.
We're just throwing out ideas here. What if we put a plow on a skid steer and a set of forks and a bucket?
Oh my gosh, the stuff.
The stuff you could do with that.
Instead of buying a truck and a tractor, you buy a skid steer and it takes care of both things, right? Actually, yeah. Cause you could plow with it. You have your, your plow blade on there and then you can have your forks to do it, to take off things and that's.
My question is like, hypothetically, when we buy stuff off the auction site, right now they use the truck, they put the trailer and they go down and grab whatever it might be. So, um, our truck is, is still in disrepair.
Do we have one truck or two trucks?
We have one. So I mean, well, we, we have two. We have a pickup truck. That's what I'm talking about. We do have the big dump. The bigger truck out in the back. I don't know what, I, I don't know how much that's used because I, I don't see that being used. Um, it's out there. We have it. But I don't see that being used. Specifically the pickup truck, we run quite a bit when we buy things off the auction site to go get things. Um, we, that's what maintenance uses when they have to go to Menards and grab things and throw it in a pickup box and bring it back. So I mean, for those trips, a skid steer obviously is not going to work for that.
Yeah.
And if this one is failing and we've already fixed it multiple times, arguably that, that would still be a need.
I could see you need a yard truck or whatever you want to call it.
You know, I get that.
Just for. But I, I just.
I don't disagree with, with the tractor, skid steer, a, a forklift. All of those may work.
I think we're better off. If we're looking just for that to be like, hey, we need to take stuff off the truck. To be like, hey, we need to take stuff off the trucks and get into here, set it at this door or we need to take it off by there. To me, that's a no-brainer. I'm I'm not spending money on a tractor to do that because. All of a sudden, that's going to turn into, oh, well, guess what? Now the tractor is down over here on the football field and now we're repairing. Grass because they're tearing up the grass or over here it's a softball field and over here at the, at the, at the bear park doing that.
Well, with this, um, I'm going to recommend that we table this idea.
I agree.
We we put the vision out there. Um, I will bring it back, uh, or we'll put it on the November agenda under old business and I will ask Tom to come in. A- as well, um, and just maybe give a little bit more background, the tractor, if if a forklift or skid steer, which option would work best?
And like, give us ideas, like what kind of truck they're looking for. Are they looking for a one-ton, three-quarter ton? Are they looking for a regular truck or a box truck or, you know, or. Yeah, or or they look, even like the suburban expeditions, are we looking at something, say. Ten years old with eighty, ninety thousand miles where you're going to put some maintenance into it, right? Or are you looking at something with thirty thousand miles that you shouldn't have any maintenance on it, but you're going to pay more for it, right? Get some ideas of stuff. I'm not ready to recommend anything, but I mean, to get more information, one hundred percent, I think that's. I think that's the way to do it.
Let's table it. We'll come back with more information in November and I'll have Tom attend as well, so he can give them a maintenance picture.
Yeah, I'd be great.
Uh, so the unpaid leave request is um. Uh, one of our food service workers, uh, she has the option to um, go with a family trip and then go with a fam. Uh, friend trip back to back um, out of country. Um, we have done these in the past with other people. Um, and we've approved those and because of the time, it's sixteen days. So then it it comes to board because it's more than that five in a row. So. We, we have uh, high-quality subs in the area where we're currently using them because again. Services experiences and health concerns down there as well. Um, so our subs know the routine. And we have subs that will be available for this. This is coming up. I want to say it's in April. Um, so it it is a ways, a ways out. Um, but we could get ready for it then. So she put in the time so that way we can can prepare for that, make sure it's approved. Um, I have no problems with allowing her to, and frankly, I mean, if we don't allow her, she might say, I'm down, I'm just going to go anyway. Because it's a, it's again, one of those quote-unquote life, you know, once in a lifetime opportunities and it's going back to back two different international trips. So good for her.
Why would you want to do that and stay here, really?
So she's probably going somewhere warm.
Yeah, shame on her.
She should be taking us with her. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve it. Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve the unpaid leave as requested. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carried. Early graduation.
So as uh, as Mr. Styles had alluded to in her report, we've had a request from an RBA student. Um, that is full-time RBA to um, to apply for uh, early graduation. Normally in our handbook, it says that this has to be known in February before the senior year. Because we're at that point trying to uh, determine resources for classes. You know, is a teacher going to be full-time or not full-time? And that's why we need to know that early. In this case, the student has been RBA, they're still RBA. Um, and frankly, if they stop being RBA, we're probably not going to spend as much money. On RBA, so this is probably more lucrative for the, for the district if we allow that student to um, graduate early. From the RBA uh. Schooling. So um, I'm open to questions, but at this point, I would, I would recommend allowing the students to do that because we do have in our, our handbook that. With with board approval, the principal can make um, adjustments to that and waive that February rule. And give permission to do so. So we would um, seek the board's approval to allow an RBA student to graduate early. And again, we would not be setting precedents. We would treat this because it says in the handbook, it's got this big, long process. And then it says, you know, these, these can be waived. Doesn't mean that it's going to be or that, oh, every RBA student can get, no. There's, each one's treated individually, so.
Hey, do I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Okay, Chris, is there a second? Angela, okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve early graduation as discussed. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carried. Bus driver sign on bonus and other incentives.
Again, this is similar to the vehicle uh, vehicle vision. Um, I don't have. I- it's more of a, of a conversation of what could be done, um, because. We are struggling to find, we are using all of our subs at this point. Um, we don't have anybody rushing the doors to say, hey, I want to be a bus driver. Uh, A, because it's kind of a unique position to drive around in the morning, have day off and then come back in the afternoon. That's kind of a unique schedule. Back in the day, thirty years ago, it was great for the hometown farmer, the the family farm. You go out and and maybe do morning milking. You come and drive a route, go back and work in a field a little bit, you know, milk the afternoon. Come in and drive the route, go home and milk at night. I mean, that was kind of the typical dairy farmer. It worked great for the family farms. So family farms are drying up. Right? We have big corporate farms now. Um, and that schedule for a dairy farmer works for other farming, it doesn't. Um, so those, those people are are no longer prevalent. Um, what we do have is we have a number of uh retirees that are coming back because they're looking for something to do, a little bit of supplemental pay. Um, and those have gotten a bit fewer. Things that we currently do, we do have things like safe driving bonus, attendance bonus. Uh, if they take a trip event, they they can. That we've paid training, we have a paid physical exam. If they refer somebody, they get a bonus. Um, we we pay by route and by mile. We have a a minimum pay structure in place so that if it's just a short little field trip to Lions camp and back, there's a minimum. Because otherwise people will come in for twenty-two minutes, they're like, well, that wasn't even worth my time, right? So there is minimums there. Um, we do have, uh, you know, we have benefits i- i- if as far as retirement contributions and those types of things. Other possibilities that was presented to me was like a sign-on bonus for new drivers. So i- i- if if I'm a driver, I refer Chris, I would get a referral bonus. Chris signs on and becomes a driver for us. We could say that, you know, after six weeks of work, we get this, this new driver sign-on bonus, whatever that might be. Um, other places have done a child ride, ride along to kind of entice those new parents that might be stay at home and say, okay. Throw my three-year-old on the bus because I don't have to go to daycare. That's what some people are doing to try to encourage. A younger person to be on the bus. Um, so those are just two ideas. I don't know. If others exist. Again, this isn't necessarily something that needs to be voted on tonight, but we're trying to recruit and retain bus drivers. Which seems to be um, pretty difficult. Now, the other option, we could just go with our, our current drivers and. Um, I know we have a couple of other health concerns coming up that are going to knock a a few people out for a while. Uh, we can do double routes. They could do one route from, you know, drop off high school kids at early and then do the, you know, pick up the elementary kids and bring them in later or something. That's not really efficient. Other, other districts are doing that. So that, that's an option if we run short on drivers. I know that there's been a handful of people that um. When I say handful of people, like three, that I'm aware of, including myself, that um, have been interested in. For me, renewing that bus license, not necessarily for a route, but if I can help out by taking a trip or something, that would be fine. I know. Uh, earlier this year, Mr. Schiff's and I um, got in the vans because we didn't have a driver to take our middle school volleyball team to Alma Bancroft. So we got in two vans, we drove them down there, we came back and then a bus after the route went down there, picked them up and came back. That's another, another reason to to have maybe a decent vehicle that's all-wheel drive or four-wheel drive. That can, can do that because we might be doing that more often. Is taking some of those middle school teams or those smaller teams by vans, dropping them off and then waiting for the bus to come and pick them up after the routes are done. So I'm open to suggestions. Again, I don't know that this is something that needs to be approved or something that, that has to be decided on tonight, but we're looking for ways. Above and beyond what we currently do because we do have a number of things that we provide for the, for the bus drivers. But again, trying to find a way to recruit and get some new people to, uh, and and again. It's, it's not easy to become a bus driver because you have to have a physical, you have to make sure that you pass the test, you got to do a trip inspection. I mean, it it's pretty lengthy to learn brand new. So it's not an easy process at the time when nobody can find them.
We're not the only ones. Place out there that has a bus is.
But even the big companies, right way, they're like, hey, every, they got advertisements on the radio, they got advertisements everywhere because.
Lots of school district is, I mean, up at arms because they can't have enough to drive their kids home. So it's.
We better keep ours happy. Try to a little bit more.
Absolutely.
I mean, I like the sign-on bonuses. For that part of it, you know, make it up. Whatever, a sixty-day and uh, you know, you stay this long, X amount, you stay this long, you get. A little more, right? That just. Makes them want to stay longer.
And the other thing I don't have, I don't have parallels with other CWC schools at this time, but it is something that I can reach out and get them. I I could again have that in November. Um, I guess I would just ask the board to think about things or things that you see in other. Lines of work that that have have worked um, to potentially recruit somebody. Offer each driver a million-dollar signing bonus. I'm sure we're going to find some people that are going to come on, but.
You'll drive until bonus is done and you get your bonus and then you'll say, I quit.
Are are most of our drivers getting up there in age, not saying. Getting up there in age as in not necessarily retired.
Arguably, they're, they're an older.
Because is it worth it to do a retirement contribution if they're already somewhat retired, right? To me, that's. I- if they're in that route, right? I mean, chances are they're, they're set somewhat financially already and they're, I mean. Having us put in an extra whatever into their, into their.
So I know that everybody gets that.
Yeah, but you know, maybe and taking that away and giving them something else in place of that may be. An option. I don't know.
Don't we have to? Because it's a WRS.
I didn't know because if they were part-time.
Well, and if they're part-time, they don't meet, meet the hours requirements, then then yeah, they'll, then they don't get that. That's correct.
You said we have seven bus routes right now learning?
Currently have seven. Um, and we're in the process, so we, we um, we are working with Links, which is a, a. Kind of an optimization, a route optimization software. Initially, when we gave him our numbers and our number of kids, he's like, oh, you're, you're, you're not going to save a route. Because I was thinking, oh, we're struggling with drivers. Maybe we could go to six routes because that's been looked at before. And then just the number of stops that we have presently, it's still going to be a seven route. Even with the optimization, there might be efficiencies that we can have to maybe make it a shorter route or something. But we're still going to have to have seven just with the number of pickups and drop-offs we have. Initially, we were thinking, oh, if we could get to five routes and if two people go out ill, we have to be a little bit longer on the road. It's okay, maybe that's a compromise we can make. With our number of stops, we just, it 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 all, it's depending on our bus capacity. That we need seven. And again, sometimes when you look at buses leaving, it looks like they're half-full, which they are. That's because the other half the kids are at sports and the other half the kids are picked up on a Friday or whatever it might be. Um, so you still have to account in case everybody would would ride. Now. If we get to a point like mid-year where we know, okay. These sixteen kids never ride anymore. All right, then maybe we could condense a route. But then all of a sudden, kind of, you're kind of gambling because all of a sudden, their heart breaks down and now they're like, oh, I got a ride. Where are you going to put them? We're going to have a seat for you. And the buses will say, oh, max capacity is seventy-six. Well, that's three kindergartners to a seat. Well, you get three. High schoolers sitting there. They don't fit like, like kindergartners do, right? So that max capacity is also sometimes a bit, a bit misleading.
How many regular bus drivers do we have right now? Staff-wise, non-sub. That are consistent, regular employees, I guess you would say.
I believe seven.
That's what I'm.
Seven, but one of them.
Seven, but one's.
Technically, I guess that's technically six.
Because Gerard's back full-time, right? So that takes over for one.
That doesn't have a bus route, but he is considered regular. He is driving every day.
We have, we have another one that has uh, another driver right now that is uh, working to uh, get, get the license back. Um, because they have a situation, they're somewhere with the, the license lapse, so the traffic, so that's two that we're down.
So we'll just table that, Tom, then.
Yeah, we, we can table till, till November. I I will do some more research with the um, CWC. I just wanted to mention that because. Kristen, our new transportation director is like, is there some other type of incentive that she goes, I posted this, you know, and on all these, you know, all these different businesses. Except the bars and maybe I got to go to the bars to get somebody to.
They can probably only do the afternoon because they'll still be hungover from the night before. Or, yeah, or they do the morning and then.
And obviously, we do a background check and I'll have to make sure the records are good and driver records are good. They don't have any DUIs and those types of things according with the state. Um, but she has, she has been posting flyers and talking with people and trying to find people that would be. Willing to to go through the training and become a driver. We have picked up a couple of part-time van drivers. Um, one for sure, where we have another interview that we have to schedule with another person that's interested in driving a van. Because we also have the specialized van that takes three kids uh, to and from because the the regular bus just wasn't. Eventually, we, we, as they get older, we try to get them back on the bus and hopefully that will happen. Um, so that might help a a little bit if we can get um, a a van driver because then our current van driver. Um, maybe he'll take a, a route here and there. So, yes, I will get more information and we can bring this back in November.
Okay, well. Consider going into closed session. The board will go into closing the second session pursuant to discussing State statute section. Nineteen point eight five one CF for the purpose of discussing compensation for public employees over which the school board. Exercises jurisdiction and considering personal information of specific persons that would likely have an adverse effect. On a person's reputation, employment contracts, da, 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 da. I need a motion to go into closed session. Okay, Matt, and second, motion has been made and second to adjourn to closed session at seven forty-two. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed? Any obsession? Motion carrying.
Rip, score the game.
Uh, they lost their first set.